All right, and at this time, will sergeants please start their recordings?
PC recording is up.
Thank you. According to the cloud, all set, and good afternoon, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. At this time, would all council members and staff please turn on their video? To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.myc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. We are ready to begin.
Excellent. All right. So I am going to read the opening statement. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here today. And then I will turn it over to our committee counsel for some logistics. So, good afternoon. I am Councilmember Pierina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I want to thank you all for joining this hearing entitled Oversight: The Impact of COVID-19 on New York City Housing Vacancies and Assessing the Ongoing Need for Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The committee will also hear one piece of legislation in relation to the continuation of the New York City Rent Stabilization Law of 1969. In my first hearing as Chair of this committee, I'm glad to be addressing several issues of great importance to the many renters of this city, the continuation of rent regulation, and the provision of emergency rental assistance to renters most in need. The laws establishing rent regulation in the city are subject to renewal every few years. In order to renew rent regulation, the City Council must pass a resolution finding that because there is still an ongoing housing shortage, there is a continuing need for rent regulation. The City Council must also pass, and the mayor must sign, a local law updating the expiration date for rent regulation. The rent laws are currently set to expire in just a few weeks, on April 1st, 2022. In order to determine whether there is a housing shortage, the city relies on the Housing and Vacancy Survey, or HVS, conducted by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development and the US Bureau of Census every three years. The last time this survey was supposed to take place was in 2020. Because that was the same year as the United States Census, the deadline to complete the survey was pushed back to 2021, and the deadline to determine whether there is a housing shortage to April 2022. Of course, 2020 was an unusual and difficult year to complete the HVS survey, not only because of the census, but also because of the horrible COVID-19 pandemic. Recognizing that the pandemic had created additional delays in completing the survey, Governor Hochul authorized an extension from April to July 2022. The additional time is meant to allow our agency, the Housing Preservation and Development, and the US Census Bureau to accurately complete their analysis of the data from the 2021 survey. This extension requires a local law in order to take effect, and this committee is here in part to hear what extending legislation today. With the rent laws set to expire and the expiration of the state's eviction moratorium last month, the city must employ all tools at its disposal to protect vulnerable renters at this critical juncture. So, another important tool for ensuring that vulnerable New Yorkers remain housed in the midst of a housing crisis is to ensure that they have access to emergency rental assistance benefits. Although the funding comes from the federal government, the city can and should play a part in conducting outreach to residents and landlords and in helping eligible households to apply for benefits. The city was in the midst of an affordability and eviction crisis even before the pandemic. With COVID-19, it has created new problems in the city's housing stock and has deepened inequities that were already in place. Today, the committee will hear from the Department of Housing Preservation and Development on the current status of the 2021 Housing and Vacancy Survey, as well as efforts to meet the rental assistance needs of New York City tenants. In addition, we will hear testimony from housing advocates, members of the real estate industry, and other key stakeholders. I would like to thank my colleagues from the Housing and Buildings Committee for joining today, including Councilmember Kagan, Councilmember Barron, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Felice, Aviles, and Councilmember Caban and Hudson. With that, I'm now going to turn it over to our committee counsel, Audrey Sun, to go over some procedural items.
Thanks very much, Chair. My name is Audrey Sun. I'm the counsel to the City Council's Committee on Housing and Buildings. Before we proceed, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will be unmuted. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask a question, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you in order. In the interest of time, we will limit council member questions to five minutes each. We will begin by hearing testimony from the administration, which will be followed by council member questions for the administration. After the question and answer period has concluded, we will proceed to testimony from the members of the public who have registered to testify. Today, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development will be represented by Assistant Commissioner Lucy Joffe. I will now administer the oath. After administering the oath, I will call on you to affirm for the record. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you, Housing and Building Committee Chair Sanchez, for the opportunity to submit testimony regarding Intro 70. I am Lucy Joffe, Assistant Commissioner for Housing Policy at New York City's Department of Housing Preservation and Development. As the committee is well aware, rent stabilization and rent control are critical protections for the city of New York, which has been in a state of continued housing crisis since at least the 1960s. This housing crisis has stubbornly persisted over the decades through many economic cycles. Periodically, New York City must conduct a survey of the supply of housing accommodations and related data. The survey provides the basis for determining the net rental vacancy rate, as well as critical information relating to housing inventory, rent-to-income ratio, i.e. rent burden, housing and neighborhood conditions, and crowding, which are relevant to the continuation of rent regulation pursuant to the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. For decades, the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey, NYCHVS, has been the primary source for calculating these critical data relating to the state of housing in the city. It has been conducted since 1965 and provides reliable citywide representative data. The most recent NYCHVS was conducted in 2017, and the determination of a housing emergency was made by the City Council in 2018. We believe that the conditions that underlie the housing crisis in New York City continue unabated. The severe shortage of low-cost units has persisted for decades, despite significant new capital investment in the creation and preservation of affordable housing and increasing expenditures to address the challenges of homelessness. This is demonstrated by the fact that the number of applicants in our affordable housing lotteries continues to greatly exceed the number of available units. In addition, as of the last NYCHVS, most New Yorkers were paying more than 30% of their income toward rent, and 1/3 of New Yorkers were paying as much as 50% of their income toward rent. Rent burdens are especially severe for the lowest-income New Yorkers. It also seems clear that the COVID-19 pandemic has only exacerbated these conditions. According to the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, who is administering the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, an overwhelming number of New York City residents applied for the program. As of early February 2022, almost 250,000 New York City households applied for emergency rental assistance. Roughly 90,000 households have received relief totaling $1.2 billion. Based on the state's request for an additional $1 billion in rental assistance, many more New York City residents in need have not received any rental assistance. The unemployment rate remains high at roughly 8%. The Census Bureau has performed the data collection for the NYCHVS since 1965. It not only has a unique capacity to conduct such a large survey, thousands of interviews, over a short period, less than nine months, but also provides unique data protections that protect the privacy of occupants. The NYCHVS collects data specific to New York City that is not found in any other data sources. Unique features include the ability to identify units that are vacant but not available for rent for various reasons, measure the vacancy rate within a narrower reference period, estimate the net rental vacancy rate at a high level of accuracy, provide double verification of each sampled unit identified as vacant, and parse out different types of housing, such as public housing among others. No other Census Bureau survey has these features, which are necessary and appropriate for evaluating New York City's unique housing market. Due to the 2020 Decennial Census, we needed a one-year extension from the state legislature and the council, allowing us to conduct the NYCHVS in 2021, not 2020. Unfortunately, the Census Bureau experienced delays due to COVID-19 and staffing to conduct the survey. The Census Bureau has completed fieldwork, and the data should be ready within the next few months. In anticipation of the delay, however, the state legislature extended by three months the deadline for any declaration of a housing emergency under the Local Emergency Housing Rent Control Act, LURCA. Consistent with the state legislature's action, Intro 70 adjusts the present expiration date of the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 so as to enable the city to gather the findings, which would allow the council to assess whether there is a continued state of emergency in 2022 based on the updated NYCHVS findings. Because the NYCHVS continues to be the most accurate and comprehensive source of information on the state of New York City's housing stock, the administration continues to believe that this information is important for the council to consider. The administration therefore supports this legislation to extend the expiration date of rent stabilization by three months, thereby conforming to the state legislature's adjustment of the date by which the formal determination of a housing emergency may be made following a survey.
Thank you. Assistant Commissioner, is that the end of your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for testifying. So we'll now move to questions. I'm going to start with a few questions, and then I'll defer to my colleagues to also ask additional questions. So thank you so much for your testimony, Assistant Commissioner Joffe, and good to see you again in this new capacity. So I want to start with just understanding exactly what stage the Housing Vacancy Survey is in now. As you have expressed, and as we all understand, the Housing Vacancy Survey is critical, and the integrity of the Housing Vacancy Survey is critical so that we can be sure to find the correct findings, right? So can you tell us exactly what stage is the HVS in now? And if Intro Number 70 does not pass prior to April 1st, 2022, 2022, what are the consequences?
Thank you for that question. So, as I mentioned, the Census Bureau experienced some delays at the beginning of their field period, and that has caused delays that require us to come to ask for this three-month extension. The field period has concluded, and the Census Bureau is finishing their work to process the data and conduct the necessary reviews so that that data may be made public. Once that is complete, then we can return to the council, which we expect to do within the next few months, to share with you, as we have done every cycle, what we call the select initial findings and the data that is critical for you all to have in order to evaluate whether the city continues to be in a state of housing emergency. If the deadline is not extended, we will not be able to present these findings in time for you all to make this necessary determination.
Thank you. And if we do not make that determination, what happens? Does anything happen to rent stabilization in the city of New York?
So I'm not in the best position to advise the council on what would happen under these unique circumstances. But if at some point the city is not in a state of housing emergency, and that would have lapsed, then rent regulation would no longer have a basis, and so we would not have rent regulation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Assistant Commissioner, give you a promotion there. So, next, can you just help us understand exactly what happened? What was the field team experiencing? How did COVID-19 impact the work on the field?
So it's important for us to consider the fact that the NYCHVS, one of the very unique features of it is that it is an in-person survey through which we collect a lot of data. So it's an extended in-person interview, and so our team took extensive precautions to prepare the field staff to be able to conduct those interviews in a way that we would know that all New Yorkers would be safe, that field representatives would be safe. But it's been some time, but if we can remember back to what things felt like in late winter of 2021, we were deep in the throes of another wave of COVID, and so hiring enough staff and getting them out into the field was a challenge, as well as just so much had to, you know, things had to be, new documents were prepared, new trainings were put up. All of those things caused delays for census and having enough field staff to get the the field team and field work up and going to conduct as many interviews to conduct the full field period. They were able to catch up, but it caused some delays at the beginning of the process.
Great, thank you. And I understand there's a COVID-19 module that has been added to the survey. What is that exactly? What are we asking, and what do we hope to learn?
We are quite proud that despite all of the challenges that were facing the team and the Census Bureau in 2020 and 2021, that we were able to add, as you mentioned, this COVID module. So there's a series of questions that we were able to ask every respondent that were specific to their experience during COVID, which is going to give us unique insight into their financial circumstances, their contributing to, but not limited to, housing, their housing situation and housing instability, their work situations, childcare provisions, or their childcare circumstances. It is going to be a very unique opportunity to have this level of data, I think both for New York City policymakers, New York City researchers, everyone who has sort of stake in what goes on in New York City, but also on the national level.
Thank you. So how many households would be affected by the results of the HVS?
Well, one could argue that the HVS is a part of the fabric of the city, and every New Yorker is the HVS and the data that we collect is relevant to how we serve every single New Yorker. I will say that specifically that about 2/3 of our entire housing stock are rentals, and about a million of those homes are currently rent stabilized.
Thank you so much. And do you have a sense of how many property owners we are talking about in these 1 million rent-stabilized apartments?
No, we don't have that information, unfortunately.
Okay, so now some specific questions that maybe we don't have the information yet, the data yet, for this Housing Vacancy Survey, of course, but maybe looking back at 2017 and what we've learned in the past. So does the Housing Vacancy Survey keep track of property owners that are warehousing vacant units or under utilization of otherwise viable apartments?
So it is premature for me to speak to what the findings we will get are. As you said, as I've noted, we don't yet have the data, and that's why we're here asking for the three-month extension. And so when we come back in several months, we will be in a better position to know and to share what information that we have gleaned from the survey.
Thank you. But in terms of the questions being asked, are we asking questions that are going to help us understand the reasons for the vacancies?
Yes, we generally do get information, not just whether a unit is vacant, but we are able to glean some understanding as to why units are vacant.
Great. And do we reach that level of granularity of warehousing or maintenance issues, et cetera?
There is a category of the HVS that's called vacant-not-available. And so that generally would include the categories that you're talking about.
Okay. But beyond vacant-not-available, do we have any further information beneath that?
Yes. And so there's, as I said, I mean, this will depend in part on Census's disclosure review and what types of information that we get. But that is one of the unique features of the Housing and Vacancy Survey that is different from all other surveys of this kind, is that we do get a unique level of granularity about the quality of the stock, not just whether a unit is vacant, but why it is vacant. And so we do expect to have really rich data on the questions that you're talking about.
Thank you. And can you share with us vacant-not-available rates from the 2017 analysis?
I believe that we can pull that up, yes.
Okay. So you will follow up with us on that?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to pause there. I have some questions around the ERAP program specifically, but I do want to open the floor to my colleagues who may have questions for just a sec. I saw that Councilmember Barron had his hand up a little while ago. So Councilmember Barron, can you take the floor?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and welcome and congratulations. Around this Housing Vacancy Survey, you mentioned in your testimony homelessness. And to me, that's a priority issue for me. So I wanted to know several things. One, do you have the latest count of the homeless, whether they're in shelters or on the streets or wherever they may be, that count? Number two, does HPD, and on the Blasio, he was talking 10% for all new housing for the homeless, but we needed it at 30% so that we can eradicate homeless, or at least put a real dent in it. So do you have any goals for all new housing coming in? And whether those levels will be high enough to, within the next 10 years or whatever, an amount of years, so that we can put a real dent in the homelessness? And then the Emergency Rental Assistance Program has really, really been a disappointment. All the money that we put in for the state, you know, on that, just that challenge between the landlord and the tenant. When, in fact, the landlord's benefit, because it's not like the tenants are getting a check, and then they have to pay the landlord, is the landlord's getting all of it. So why it became such a challenge? This amazes me, and how much of the money is out, and how much impact has it had?
So thank you. There are a number of important questions and points in what you just shared. And certainly, the administration and the HPD shares your concerns about the wide-ranging effects of COVID-19 on so many different New Yorkers in many different ways. And I'll attempt to get to as many of the things that I think you brought up as I can. I will note that DSS, actually, the Department of Social Services, is responsible for the homelessness count. So we can coordinate with them, but I don't have those numbers here today. That is something that happens out of a different agency. But significantly, the Housing and Vacancy Survey, I've talked about the ways in which it is unique compared to a lot of the other survey products out there. And one of the things that we think is really important and really critical to the issues that you were raising is it will give us unique insight, both because of the data we've always collected and through this special COVID module that we were talking about earlier, on the causes of housing instability. And that is really significant for our policymaking, how we think about how we serve New Yorkers, including people who are homeless and are at risk of homelessness. So that is, you know, something that we think will add to our ability to better serve New Yorkers, to be better prepared for crises and to help us navigate the recovery. And in particular, we have greatly expanded, and this was a priority in where we live, NYC, to make sure that we really have an understanding of how housing instability and the various factors at play impact demographic groups differently. And this is really important to how we think about building an equitable recovery. And so this is something that is also unique to the HVS, how we will be able to glean that data. So all of this, I sit here talking about the data that I'm looking forward to being able to come back and share with you if we can get this extension, which we need to allow us that extra time.
Right. And in all due honesty, all that you said, you should have had data already in the past on the homeless numbers. There's no way you can talk about housing emergency and vacancy and all of that and say another agency has the numbers. We don't have them. That's a problem. That's a problem, because those numbers, if you're making goals to deal with housing emergency, which includes homelessness, then certainly, if you say there's 80,000 families and individuals are homeless, and if we do 30% on the new homes, we get 60,003. I mean, you've got to have those numbers. It's not something that's responsible for another agency and not your agency. There has to be some communication with those numbers if we're serious about dealing with homelessness.
Yes, and our coordination, both with DSS, with MOPT, is really important and something that we're committed to working on. I apologize if I didn't bring the numbers with me today. But we will certainly circle back with that detail as well. And I did want to note that the homeless set aside, which you mentioned, is up to 15% now. But we look forward to continuing to work with.
15% is unacceptable. If we are serious, come on now. There are $100 billion of capital money that the city has for the next 10 years. 15% is unconscionable and unacceptable. We had to fight to get to 15%. It needs to be 30, twice as much, if we're serious. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. We look forward to having continued conversations over this as well and for the usefulness of this data for these conversations moving forward.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Barron. I now want to call on Councilmember Hudson.
Hi there. Thank you, Chair Sanchez. I have a few questions. So I guess I can just go one by one, or you want me to say them all, and you can? What's your preference?
We can go, let's go one by one, and I'll have a better shot at it, but I'm happy if a few of them end up together. I'll do my best. We can always circle back.
All right, cool. Let's go one by one. So my first question is, does the HVS account for units currently on the market or rented out that are in a state of extreme disrepair, like excessive Class C violations? And if so, are these taken into account when the city determines if there's a housing shortage?
There has always been a group of units that are determined to be uninhabitable, and those are not considered vacant.
Okay, thank you. What's the general understanding for why units are historically vacant? And for those that are in a state of disrepair, is there a program for HPD to intervene and get them back up to code so we can get them on the market?
So yes, while I'm here today primarily focused on the data side of this, there are a number of HPD programs which are geared toward both helping owners and sometimes forcing owners to better comply with their obligations, as you described.
Okay, we can follow up on that one. As vacancies skyrocketed during the pandemic and news reports indicate that that trend has quickly turned around in the last few months, does the HVS take into account this anomaly or adjust for the likely trend of decreased vacancies, particularly in Manhattan?
The NYCHVS is a snapshot in time. So essentially, it captures the vacancy during the field work period. That being said, it is, as I've spoken about, the unique aspects of the NYCHVS, and it's actually sort of the only really uniquely represents, and it's not uniquely represented, it is a fully representative, statistically significant source of data and ensures that we are capturing all parts of the market, whether it's by borough, various communities that are not always well-represented. And therefore, it's different from some of the other reports that we may have heard about informal surveys in the news. And so we therefore are really confident that at the time that it's measuring the vacancy rate, that it is fully capturing what the true picture of what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson. Councilmember Felice?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Rosalind Felice. Thank you, Chairwoman Pierina Sanchez, for organizing this hearing on this very important topic. I represent the 15th Council District in the Bronx, and this is extremely important to me and the residents that I represent, given that we have so many rent-stabilized apartments in the district that I proudly represent. Just one question, super brief. I'm looking very forward to reviewing the data once the new survey is completed. But I'm wondering if you could provide a brief summary of the data that was obtained last time that the survey was conducted a few years ago?
So yes, I am very, in my 2021 mindset and here, very focused on making sure that we all can get this three-month extension. But if I sort of go back pre-COVID, which feels so long ago, the 2017 NYCHVS, as we've talked about publicly, did find that the the 2017 NYCHVS, as we've talked about publicly, did find that, that the vacancy rate was well below 5%. It was sort of between 3 and 4%, I think 3.65 about. Rent burden rates were quite high, both folks who were rent burdened and even severely rent burdened. That was of concerning levels. And so that information, among others, which we have a sort of a whole list of our, what we call the select initial findings, and that's what we come present every year. That's all available on our website. We can make that public. But I think the, sort of the things that we're most often asked about are the vacancy rate, levels of rent burden, and levels of rent burden, crowding, housing quality, et cetera.
Okay. And another question, how do we define a household that's considered severely rent burdened?
Thank you for that question. A household is severely rent burdened if they're paying more than 50% of their income toward rent.
Okay, and last time that the survey was conducted, how severely rent burdened was the, were the families that were surveyed?
You mean how many families were severely rent burdened? Or how much was their rent burden if they were, if they were over the 50% threshold?
Both.
So what I can say is that about half the population as of 2017 were severe, sorry, were rent burdened, and about a third were severely rent burdened. Once we start talking about like what the, the actual levels of rent burden are, we're getting into sort of a level of detailing granularity, which might be easier if I, I follow up with you with some, some charts or, or data, if that would be okay.
Okay, great, yeah. No more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Felice. Now I want to turn it to Councilmember Abilis.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and thank you, everyone, for being here today. I have a few simple questions, I guess. What, what is the response rate that you're, you're generally getting for the HVS survey?
Thank you for that question. It's actually something that we're actually quite proud about. The response rate historically for the NYCHVS is quite high and has historically been around 80%, which is the result of a lot of outreach, careful sort of planning and coordination to ensure that we are reaching a lot of hard-to-reach communities, including our language access work, which was a huge priority for us this year, especially in the lead up to 2020 and 2021, when there was so much discussion about concerns with the census. This was a huge priority for, for our team and in our work with the Census Bureau. And it is, we have become a model for the Census Bureau's work and have gotten questions from folks around the, the country and actually in Europe about how we approach some of, some of this work.
And when you, when you break that, I guess in terms of numbers, what's the, the actual quantity of surveys? Or the scope in terms of actual numbers and distribution, I guess, across the five boroughs?
So as we've talked about, we don't yet have the data, which is why I'm here asking for this extension. And so I will be able to speak to that better when we come back. But right now, we need the three-month extension so that the Census Bureau can finish the work, and then we'll, we'll have the data and be able to share with you that level of detail.
Got it. When, in, in terms of what's being tracked, does the, is there also looking at loss of, of rent stabilized units?
Yes, that is a core function of the survey.
And who in particular determines that the criteria, the criteria of the actual, the vacancy rate? Is what determines whether rent stabilization exists in our city or that it's a crisis? Because it seems, it seems like a quite narrow view of the crisis that we're actually confronted with.
So largely, as we've talked about, we're here sort of in the, under the umbrella of state law requirements, which dictate our responsibilities, dictate our obligation to conduct this survey and the circumstances under which we're coming back to all of you. And we will share these findings and say, here is what we have determined. And then from there, the council's obligation is to determine whether or not we continue to be in a state, in a state of emergency. This is, these legal obligations are sort of laid out in a series of, of largely state statutes.
Got it. Thank you, thank you so much. Obviously, in support of extending the deadline for, for this important piece of work, I do, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, sadly, we have been left with only two programs to protect some of our most vulnerable New Yorkers. That also includes public housing and all of a result of, you know, commodification of housing, which is going to keep us in a crisis. And we just deeply need to expand social housing for all of our communities, because clearly we are not stepping up to the job. But thank you for the work you're doing, and this is an important piece of stock for our city.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Just a quick follow-up, Assistant Commissioner. So just on, on the question of the total number, understanding that the, we're getting an extension so you can continue this survey. But looking at 2017 numbers, so we had about three and a half million households in New York City, about 1 million of those are rent regulated. So what, what was, if you can tell us, what was the, the sampling rate then? What was the N? What was the sample size for, for that survey?
In 2017?
Yes.
So we work closely with the, we actually have a team of survey methodologists here at HPD and a team of, there's a team of survey methodologists at the Census Bureau who work to give us an estimate of what is the required number to ensure that we are, our results will be statistically significant and that we are ensuring that we're representing all New York City communities. The, in 2017, our N, if you will, was roughly 15,000.
Got it. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much, Chair Sanchez. And I didn't hear the whole thing, because I had the, another committee. But this is my question, which is more general. First of all, your survey has kept New York City going over the years since I've been around for a long time. I certainly know that 5% is our scary number. And we want to keep it and certainly an extension. But the biggest issue in New York, of course, is how do we make it affordable? We're a very unaffordable city. And so I'm just wondering, even though you're doing the data and you have data analytics and that's what you're focusing on, I'm just trying, as a council member and having been around for a while, to figure out how we can be less siloed in our city, because it's, everything is so silent. And so one of my questions is, you know, you now know that if there are some ways, in addition to, you know, SCREE and other kinds of programs that help, what in the world are we going to do, you know, guidelines board aside, because that's another topic? Do you see, are you, are you willing to have this further discussion about, are there ways that we can help make our city more affordable? And I know that's a general kind of question, but we've got to think about this as opposed to everybody in a silo and doing their job excellently, there's another discussion here. And so I'm just wondering if that comes up as a result of your data, if there's some, you know, I know that that's, you know, goal of this administration, goal of the city council, but to be honest with you, it never happens. So I'm, I'm just wondering if that's something that, you know, you see the overcrowding, you see the large numbers of people paying more than 50% of their rent. Are there other programs that we should be considering that would address some of these issues? SCREE is great. Guess what? Billions of people don't apply for it. I don't, never quite understand it, et cetera. And there may be other, maybe we need more EITC, which the mayor and the speaker have suggested. But it never seems to get to all the people who should be getting it, et cetera. So you get my question. I'm just wondering, how do we go beyond your amazing data to help get rid of some of this extremely costly city?
So thank you for that question. There, there is a lot there. And since I am a housing policy person, I probably could sit here and, and want to talk about this for, for long periods of time. But yes, we, we continue to do this because we believe there are, there is, there is much work to do. And the, I've talked throughout this hearing so far about, in sort of glowing terms, about the, the data that we collect through the Housing and Vacancy Survey. And it is because I do believe that there is both the data that we collect for the survey that is required to meet our statutory obligations. And so as we've said, I'm, I'm here to ask for that extra three-month extension. But there is other data available as well that is really critical and going to give us a, a unique level of insight into what, what we all, you know, are seeing every day, but sort of in the, grounded in the data of what New Yorkers experienced specifically during 2021 and the pandemic, as well as the housing instability that we're seeing generally. And it is a priority, part of the, the reason why some of my answers are, are straying to cover some of the new data and important data that we have is because it's hard for me to, to not take that opportunity to, to make sure everyone knows about the Housing and Vacancy Survey as this very rich data source that is really important for researchers, policymakers, all of us to be engaging around. So our continued hope is that if we can get this extension, if we can come back to you in a few months with more data, and then over the next year, we're going to continue processing this data and releasing these findings that we can all use this to continue towards the, the very ends you're talking about.
So I'm sure you'll get the extension. What I'm not sure of is the agencies will work together to figure out how to address some of the challenges. So if you get the extension, will you promise that these agencies will work together?
Yes, we look forward to working with the other agencies and with you all on these problems.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much, Councilwoman. And Assistant Commissioner, just to sort of follow up on, on that line, can you, can you tell us about how the Housing Vacancy Survey, in addition to, you know, helping us determine that there is still a state of emergency and all of that, how does the city, not just HPD, across agencies, how does the city use this information to inform, you know, the housing plan essentially, and, and fighting homelessness, as Councilmember Barron has raised?
Thank you for that question. So HPD has worked historically and with even more earnest towards this 2021 NYCHVS with a number of agencies across the city. So a lot of agencies helped inform what, what questions were going to be asked, what information was critical to know, to know, to understand their work. That, those partnerships continued through, both in the sort of the planning, the brainstorming phase, and they will, as we get the data in the use phase, there's a lot of ways that we use the data after, that we've already been working with other agencies. The Department, DWCP, Department of Consumer Worker Protection, sorry, the name changed. This happened a while ago, but still struggle with it a little bit. The Office of Financial Empowerment, the Department of City Planning, these are all agencies that we work really closely with using this data. And the Mayor's Office for Opportunity. So these are all partners that have helped inform the information that we're collecting, inform the process and who we work with using the data after. And I'll also say that even within HPD, this is the first full cycle that the, that the survey is, 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 or the team that leads the work on the survey is within the Office of Policy and Strategy, right? And that's not an accident that I'm one of the, I'm the person here presenting to you all, because it is really critical to us. This is not just data that we collect and put on a shelf, but data that is, drives our policymaking, drives how we all approach these intractable problems. And so this is of, of huge importance to us. And part of the reason why I'm nervous about, you know, to, to be here today and ensure we have this extension, because it is so critical, but also really confident that with, if we get, get this extension, that we will be back within a few months and ready to, to work with you all.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner. Now, just a few questions on the ERAP side, and then unless my colleagues have any additional questions, well, well, thank you for your time. So, so just moving to, to the ERAP side, can you, can you refresh for us how much money has been allocated to New York City? How much money or how many applications do we still have pending? And do we have an estimate of how much that would cost in, in terms of what New York City specifically needs from the state in order to fund ERAP?
So I, I want to start by discussing ERAP as a state program that was administered by the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, as you may know. So HPD, in support of DSS and working with MOPT, provided a lot of support in terms of outreach to New York to make sure that New Yorkers knew, knew about the program, knew about their rights and applied for the program, but did not administer our, our own program. So all of the federal funds that were allocated to, to New York State overall went through, went through the New York State Program. HPD, I hope I'm getting all the, the parts of your question, but HPD sent, I think, mailers to about 280,000 landlords, including small landlords, as well as some follow-up emails. We emailed ERAP materials to over 60,000 partners, property managers, Section Eight participants and landlords, Mitchell Lama property managers. We have our mobile van that distributed ERAP flyers. We distributed flyers to tenants and landlords during building visits. We worked with DSS to distribute ERAP flyers at tenant resource fairs. We put out information through our website and the New York City Housing Resource Portal. And we also created a flyer to work with our CBO partners to make sure that landlords have, know about the additional resources that are available beyond ERAP, like the homeowner help desk, the landlord ambassador program and our various preservation programs. And finally, we promoted ERAP across HP's social media channels.
Great, thank you. So is it correct to say that you do not, HPD does not have, and the city of New York does not have the numbers of a number of applicants that were granted in New York City and the, the amount of relief that was received in terms of number of applicants?
So OJDA has put out some publicly available information on this, and that's what we also have. So my understanding is that roughly 90,000 households have received, New York City households have received rent relief in totaling $1.2 billion.
And how many, how many applied?
As of early February, 250,000.
150,000, thank you. And we don't have a sense of how much, what, what the financial gap is in terms of what the city of New York needs to, to fund those additional 160,000 applications?
Um, I, I don't have that data in terms of what the additional, those who applied and have not, did not get, for whatever reason, what the amount that they need is. And I also don't know, you know, the extent of the number of households that are actually truly in need. Obviously, we recognize that the need is quite great. We will also hope to get helpful insights from the HVS when we have this data. But to your specific question, no, we don't have a source for, for that information that you're asking about.
No, absolutely. And I, and I know just from at least my neighborhood in District 14 that there are so many people that still don't know about ERAP. So 250,000 applications is a vast underrepresentation of, of what the need is. And one final question, not sure if you'll, you'll have this information, but do you know how New York State, New York City, might compare to other states in the country with respect to number of applications filed versus financial aid received? Are we an outlier in any way?
So what I can say is that New York State, by virtue of being on the larger end population-wise and because of the extent of our need, we received one of the larger applications or sort of larger grants. But to, it would, I couldn't speak really to other states and how their programs have functioned or the details of that.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you so much. I just want to check in if there, if any of my colleagues have any additional questions before we, we let go, the Assistant Commissioner? Okay, well, Assistant Commissioner, thank you so much for your time. We hope that, you know, someone can stay and then listen in on the testimonies and questions for, for the other panelists we have. But I want to thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you.
Great. So now we will be moving to public testimony. And I am going to call on our, our Committee Counsel, Audrey Sun, to let us know who is first to speak.
Thanks so much, Chair. We do have one registered member of the public who will be utilizing a translator. So we'll call on that individual to testify first. So first, we will hear from Bruno Olivares, and afterwards, we will hear from Mike McKee. And we will periodically call on names that are on deck. So when you hear your name, please be prepared to, to click on the prompt to unmute.
Thank you, Audrey. Mr. Bruno, señor Bruno?
So I'm moving in. Come on.
Are you ready?
Hello, señor Bruno. Estás preparado? Sorry.
Sorry. Sí.
I says, I apologize. Yes.
Saben quiere encender su cámara o quiere hacer el testimonio de esta forma?
De esta forma, ¿puede decirlo más?
This form is fine. Can it be done like this, uh, this way?
Perfecto. Uh, thank you. Audrey, how, how should we handle the, the administration of the oath via the, via the translator as well?
Uh, there is no oath for members of the public.
Got it. Okay, perfect.
Bueno, señor Bruno, ¿puede empezar?
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Bruno Olivares y soy miembro de ME, de Make the Road to New York. Vivo en Queens, en una aparta, eh, en un apartamento de renta controlada.
Okay, mi nombre, my name is Bruno Olivares. I live in Queens. Um, part of the section, uh, that has a controlled rent, part of the, uh, member board. Hello?
Sí, vivo más de 25 años aquí en este apartamento.
I'm in this. One second. Can I give Bruno instructions, uh, briefly for the consecutive translation? Señor Bruno, por favor, puedes hacer tus frases que estoy haciendo la traducción consecutiva. Entonces puedes como hablar como 20 segundos y dándome la oportunidad de hablar después de usted. Está bien?
Gracias.
Gracias. Lo que sea.
Okay. Yo vivo en este edificio más de 25 años. Yo crea mis dos hijas. Y es, es mi casa en este, en el área de Jackson Heights.
I've lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. I've raised both my daughters, and this is my neighborhood in Jackson Heights.
Estoy aquí porque como miles de personas en la ciudad, la pandemia me ha afectado muchísimo y me ha llevado a la incertidumbre.
I'm here because like thousands of other people, the pandemic has affected me greatly and brought me down close to ruin.
Como mi renta, mi apartamento es de renta controlada. Esto me había dado cierta estabilidad por las protecciones otorgadas ante incrementos grandes de renta.
Because my apartment is rent-controlled, this has granted me a bit of stability, um, because, uh, against the increases of rent over time.
Y por el derecho a poder quedarme en mi apartamento año con año.
And because of that, I've been able to stay in my apartment year after year.
Pero el COVID ha destruido mi estabilidad y a causa del COVID no he tenido trabajo.
And COVID, the pandemic, has ruined my stability, and because of COVID, I haven't had work.
Lo que me llevó a empezar a deber en mi renta.
But beginning, began to happen was the debt for the rent.
Desde el punto que empecé a deber al dueño del apartamento, él me empezó a mandar cartas pidiendo la renta y estados de notificación de 14 días.
Since I started to owe rent, the landlord started sending me letters and notifications every 14 days about paying the rent.
Yo he vivido con mucho temor ahora, pues pensé que tenía que desalojar en 14 días. Eh, vivo físicamente estresado con esta deuda, al punto de que ha afectado mi salud física y mental.
I've lived with this stress, uh, throughout this situation, uh, where I felt that I had to pay the entire balance in 14 days. The stress has affected my physical health and mental health as well.
Tan pronto me enteré del programa de ayuda de renta de ERAP, apliqué. Pues no veía otro modo de poder ponerme al corriente con mi renta.
The moment I learned about the existence of the program at ERAP, I applied because I saw no other way of helping my rent situation.
Y poder evitar un desalojo.
And to avoid, uh, being evicted.
Unas semanas después me enteré que los fondos básicamente se habían terminado y que sería difícil que se aprobara mi aplicación.
A week later, I discovered that the funds have been, uh, are depleted, and it would affect my application.
Sigo esperando una respuesta a mi aplicación, pero se necesitan más fondos para todas las personas que quedamos fuera de este alivio.
I'm still waiting for a response and the people, uh, and waiting for, uh, receiving the aid that I need.
Ya, yo no puedo ni pens- ni pensar en un desalojo. Pues me sería imposible encontrar otro apartamento, especialmente con los precios tan descontrolados de este mercado de renta.
I can't even think of a way to get out of this debt, especially with the prices of rent in other apartments, uh, which are out of control in this market.
En donde un apartamento está alrededor de 2,400 dólares, sin trabajo y sin ayuda, quedaría en la calle.
When some apartments are over $2,400 without work and help, I would end up in the streets.
Les pido la continuación de protecciones si el límite en el incremento de renta para estos apartamentos de renta estabilizada. Y si es posible protección para mis vecinos.
I ask for continuation of the rent protections in stabilized apartments, for stabilized apartments, and if possible, protections for my neighbors.
Seguimos en una crisis y no nos hemos recuperado del todo de lo que nos trajo el COVID.
We're still in a crisis and we haven't recovered completely, uh, on the consequences that COVID brought us.
También es urgente tener más fondos para el alivio de la renta, para, para evitar más desalojos. Desafortunadamente, para mi caso, mi casero ya ha metido mi caso a corte, y hay muchos casos como los míos.
It's important to have additional funds to avoid these types of evictions. Uh, unfortunately, in my case, the landlord has already brought this to court. Um, and this would help avoid cases like mine.
Pido por favor su apoyo ante estos problemas.
I ask your help, um, with these problems.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias a usted, señor Bruno, por compartir su historia. Thank you so much, Mr. Bruno, for sharing your story with us. Um, if you, if you have not already connected with your local council member, uh, please reach out to us and, and we can make sure you do that. Although Make the Road is, you know, always there for, for its members, I'm sure that they are also working with you. Pero muchísimas gracias. Si no se ha conectado con su concejal local, por favor, avísenos y podemos ayudarlos a, a, a conectar con ellos, pero sabemos que Make the Road siempre está trabajando con sus miembros. Pero muchísimas gracias por compartir su historia.
Muchas gracias a ustedes.
Thank you so much. So, um, Audrey, we'll turn it to you for the next person.
Thanks so much. Well, next here from Mike McGee, followed by Ryan Manel.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the committee. My name is Michael McKee. Uh, I am the Treasurer of the Tennis Political Action Committee. I'm here to testify in support of Intro 70, uh, which, uh, you have to do. It's a no-brainer. Um, and I have some thoughts about the Housing and Vacancies Survey, something I'm very much familiar with, but uh, won't be able to do much in two minutes, uh, in terms of expressing those thoughts. Um, I just want to point out that many tenants have been very much worried for the last couple of years, uh, at the apparent softening in the rental market, uh, which we saw in 2020, um, and, uh, have worried about whether the 5% uh, vacancy rate would be exceeded, uh, which, uh, I want to point out is an arbitrary number. I'm not aware of any scientific, uh, or empirical study that's ever been done, uh, that will tell you that if you've got a vacancy rate of four point, um, and a half, four and a half percent, you've got a housing emergency. If you've got a vacancy rate of five and a half percent, you don't. And if you stop and think about it, it doesn't really make much sense. It's just a number that government has plucked out of thin air and inserted into, uh, state law. Um, but it is what you have to deal with. Um, clearly, the, uh, market has picked up enormously. Uh, and, uh, I think it's probable that we will see the vacancy rate well under 5% when the HVS data are finally available. Um, um, I, I also want to point out that in, in 1996, according to the Housing and Vacancies Survey, uh, New York City had 56, 56% of rental units in New York City were either rent-controlled or rent-stabilized. And according to the 2017 Housing and Vacancies Survey, 45% of apartments were rents-controlled or rent-stabilized. That is a direct result of 25 years of weakening amendments enacted by the state legislature and also enacted by the New York City Council in 1994. Many people are not aware that it was not the Republicans in Albany who first imposed permanent vacancy control on New York City. It was, in fact, the New York City, uh, Council under the leadership of then Speaker Peter Vallone, who was currying favor with the real estate lobby, uh, whose support he wanted when he later ran for mayor and came in third. Um, this is a very important issue. The Housing and Vacancies Survey is a, is a vital study, not just because it gives you the information about the net vacancy rate, because it gives you an enormous wealth of data about tenants and housing and neighborhoods. It's an expensive study. It's statistically very reliable. Um, and, uh, we support the continuation of the HVS, even if we can once and for all get rid of the vacancy rate uh, trigger for, uh, having a, a declaration of an emergency.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. McKee. And I, I do have one question for you. Thank you for your advocacy and, and for your testimony. Um, I, I, I believe that you are involved and supportive of good cause legislation in the state. Um, and so my question-
As are you.
Absolutely. Um, and so my, my question for you is, um, how do you, how do you see the interaction between good cause legislation, uh, potentially passing in the state and, uh, HVS, a state of rental emergency and, and the need for this, the Housing Stabilization Act?
Well, we are, we, when I say we, I mean, the tenant movement, uh, the statewide tenant movement, Housing Justice for All, uh, of which I'm part, we are absolutely determined that we've got to get this bill passed, uh, in Albany this year. There is also, there has also been four upstate municipalities that have enacted good cause eviction on the local level. Uh, and there are other cities in upstate New York that are in, where good cause eviction is in the pipeline. Now, the city of New York cannot do this because you don't have the power, because you are preempted, you are forbidden by the state ERSAT law from enacting any law, uh, dealing with rents or evictions, other than you have two powers. You have the power to continue the rent laws every three years based on a finding of a net vacancy rate of 5% or less, and you have the power to deregulate categories of housing. Those are the two powers you have under the ERSAT law. So this is a very unfair law, and we think that you and we should be working to undo the ERSAT law, uh, so that you could do these things yourself. Um, the, it's also important to note that good cause eviction, while it is being painted by the real estate lobby as a radical restructuring of the landlord-tenant relationship, is in fact a very moderate form of protection, nowhere near as protective as any form of rent regulation. It merely gives tenants a defense against an unfair or arbitrary or retaliatory eviction if they choose to stay in fight rather than move. And we know from experience that many tenants will self-evict out of fear or because they don't know their rights or they can't get a lawyer, which is certainly easier in New York City than it is in upstate. Um, or if the tenant wants to contest a, uh, an unfair excessive rent increase. Um, it just basically gives people the defense, and it will be up to a judge to determine whether the eviction is justified or whether the rent increase is justified. That's no great assurance, um, because there are good judges and bad judges. But this is a crucial, crucial protection for tenants living in unregulated market rate apartments who otherwise have no protections at all. They have procedural rights, but they have no substantive protections. And I want to just thank you, Chair Sanchez, for your speech the other day in the Bronx. Uh, I watched the video of that rally. It was terrific rally. But this is a perfect illustration of why we've got to get these protections, uh, on the books.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. McKee. I really, really appreciate your time, your testimony and your continued advocacy.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to our next speaker, Audrey.
Yes, thanks so much. Well, next here from Ryan Manel, followed by Ellen Davidson.
Good time. We'll begin.
Well, well, thank you, Chair Sanchez, and congratulations on your first hearing. Uh, my name is Ryan Manel. Um, I represent the Real Estate Board of New York. Uh, throughout the pandemic, Revney and its members have taken industry-leading steps to help keep New Yorkers housed and ensure greater access to housing for New Yorkers in need. Uh, for example, even before the state adoption of the eviction moratorium, uh, Revney members committed to a voluntary 90-day hall to evictions to ensure vulnerable New Yorkers were not displaced from their homes during the immediate crisis. Uh, this step was followed by Revney members and others in the real estate community stepping forward to create Project Parachute, which is a coalition of owners, non-for-profit organizations and service providers led by enterprise community partners, which aims to work collaboratively to keep vulnerable New Yorkers impacted by the COVID-19 crisis in their homes. And to date, Project Parachute has raised nearly 13 million, uh, to support over 3,000 New Yorkers, particularly those who have not served, who are not served by existing forms of assistance, uh, to stay in their apartments or homes. Uh, over 80% of these New Yorkers would not have qualified for existing rental assistance programs due to restricted eligibility requirements. Um, on top of that, uh, in regards to ERAP, uh, in 2021, Revney has repeatedly worked with the state since 2021 to deploy those dollars effectively and expeditiously, um, and continues to find ways to expand access to rental assistance for New Yorkers in need. Uh, most recently, Revney was proud to join Governor Hochul and many others who call on Washington, allocated more than 1.5 billion in additional funding for emergency, emergency rental assistance. Uh, and the recent reopening of the ERAP portal and this increased advocacy shows what we all know, what we all know is that New York needs more assistance. Uh, we are ready to work and willing to work with the council and appropriate city agencies to keep New Yorkers housed, design and implement systems and programs that meet the needs of New Yorkers today. Uh, thank you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Ryan, and, and good to see you. Um, so Ryan, just one question. On Project Parachute, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the, the scale and scope of that program? How you funded it?
We did, yeah. So a number of Revney members actually stepped up, as I mentioned, uh, to put money aside that could support New Yorkers, and that money was allocated through organizations across the city, uh, throughout the five boroughs, uh, to actually get it to the folks that they're working with on a regular basis, uh, to stay in their homes, to help pay the rent, uh, help pay the utilities. Uh, and so this has been something we've been very proud of. Uh, we raised, um, almost $14 million. Uh, that money has gone directly to 3,000 New Yorkers. Uh, we want to make sure that we're continuing to utilize, uh, these resources. And so if you and, and your constituents, uh, have a need, um, or if you hear of anyone else, uh, that we can particularly help, uh, let us know and we'll be happy to connect the dots there to make sure they can stay in their apartments.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ryan. Appreciate your testimony and your time.
Absolutely.
Audrey?
Thanks. Well, next here from Ellen Davidson, followed by Chris Madello.
Good time. We'll begin.
Afternoon. Um, my name is Ellen Davidson. I'm a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society. Um, and I want to thank, uh, Chair Sanchez for holding this hearing today. Um, and it's exciting to meet the new Housing and Buildings Committee of the City Council. Um, I, uh, well, my testimony discusses ERAP. Um, and I'm available to answer any questions about the program. I've spent most of my life, uh, for the last number of months working on it. Um, the only thing I would say about ERAP is that the state legislature, um, uh, legislation put subsidized and public housing at the back of the line. Um, and the state agency has said that they expect that nobody who is subsidized or is in public housing will receive ERAP funds. Um, NICHAT, at this point, uh, estimates that it is owed about over 200 million. Um, it says it does not want to go after its residents, um, but that is the, its operating expenses, and that is the money that it needs to pay bills. Uh, we think also HUD will require them eventually to, to go after their residents. Um, we asked the council to actually pay that money out of New York City's COVID rent relief. Um, it is outrageous that, uh, some of the poorest New Yorkers were put at the back of the line for rent relief. Additionally, we think it is time for New York City to think of bold ways of helping, uh, New York City residents afford their homes. Um, and therefore, we are proposing a new expansion of the City FEPs program um, to not only help, uh, people in all shelters, not only specific shelters, um, get a path to permanent housing, but to help people who are rent- get a path to permanent housing, but to help people who are rent burdened and unstably housed and to be able to stay in their homes so that we can recover from COVID. I'm happy to answer questions about anything in my testimony. I will, might also mention that we represent the suspended interveners in the lawsuits against the rent laws, and I'm prepared to answer questions about that as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ellen, for your testimony. I also want to just make a note, if any colleagues want to ask follow-up questions, please, please raise your hands, and I'll, of course, call on you. Yeah, so Ellen, quick question, just in follow-up to your very last sentence, the rent law interveners. Can you explain a little bit about what that means?
Yeah, some of you may be aware, others may not, that, that the real estate interests in New York State have brought five separate lawsuits, some of which are trying to overturn the rent stabilization law, some of which are simply trying to roll back the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act. All five cases have been dismissed by federal judges. All five cases are currently on appeal. The first two were heard in the Second Circuit two weeks ago. And those two cases, that's the case brought by CHIP and RSA, and also a second case involving a number of plaintiffs, have made it very clear that they are trying to overturn the rent laws altogether. Having said that, the panel was not, the panel of judges hearing it did not seem to, did not make it seem likely that they would be successful. They, they, they're, they did not accept the landlord's arguments in any, in any, any way that makes me concerned about the decision that will be coming out of that circuit panel.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Ellen, for your testimony. We'll certainly be following up on the two hundred million dollars in mentories. In NICH, it's a very serious issue. We know that NICH already has such a shortfall, budgetary shortfall. So we'll look forward to talking more with you about that, especially during the budget process.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, and I look forward to testifying in future dates. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey.
Thanks so much. We'll now hear from Chris Widdelo, followed by Eric Lee.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today. I want to talk a little bit about the E-RAP program and some perspective from our, from where we sit. We're, my name, we're with, I am with NICEAFA, we're the New York State Association for Affordable Housing. Our members are, you know, largely building affordable housing that receives some type of state or city subsidy. And, you know, I guess the first thing I would like to ask is that for the council to continue to ask and urge the state to look for any way that they can apply or ask for more funding, you know, from the federal government to continue to fund the E-RAP and L-RAP program. L-RAP program is a for small landlords, assistance for small landlords that need to apply, you know, that want to apply for for E-RAP, for, for rent funding for, for their tenants that are not part of E-RAP. And, you know, there's over three hundred thousand applications were submitted for E-RAP, and there are still about a hundred and forty-eight thousand that are outstanding but have not been processed. So there's, there's still a long way to go. We know that the governor, and we really do appreciate Governor Hochul's persistence in asking for, you know, one point six billion dollars. But we know that New York only got a small, small fraction of that, and it's just not, you know, not going to go far enough. I think, well, you know, should we be able to figure, find a path forward with E-RAP and find additional funding? Or should something like this happen again? We need to have a little bit better process. One of the things that we learned, NICEAFA is part of the group Project Parachute that Ryan mentioned. And what we heard, you know, in working on how we can, you know, help renters in affordable housing was, you know, you're the owner, you have all this information. Why am I asking to go through this long process to provide additional information to get, you know, the assistance? The, the, in people that are in, usually that are in affordable housing, provide a lot of backup documentation, right? So they, in order to qualify, they, they need to have all this information already provided to the owner. And so many of them do have everything that they need, but are unable to apply on behalf of the tenants. And so we would like to see, at least for those that are receiving a city or state subsidy, that there is a, some type of expedited process where landlords can apply on behalf of a building for those that qualify, that those that are in arrears, so we can make the tenants whole and also make sure that landlords have the funds that they need to continue to operate the buildings the way we need them to. So I've submitted a written testimony as well within further detail, and we'd welcome any questions and our follow-up conversations. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Chris. Really appreciate your testimony and your time. Audrey.
Yes, thanks so much. We'll now hear from Eric Lee, followed by Lyric Thompson.
Time will begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Eric Lee. I'm Director of Policy and Planning for Homeless Services United. Thank you, Chair Sanchez and members of the committee for allowing me to testify today. I'll summarize my written testimony, given time allotted. Given the overwhelming need for rental arrears, we recommend that the council urge Governor Hochul to commit an additional two billion dollars in unallocated federal pandemic relief to fund E-RAP. In doing so, the governor could halt the state's eviction crisis and possible surge in homelessness. While we want to see those funds replenished now, the city can and should take immediate action to help renters in arrears through expanding access to one-shot deals. One way that the council could do this is reintroducing Intro twenty-one seventy-two, which would remove the future ability to pay requirement, which is an eligibility requirement for one-shots. As the council is considering its response to the mayor's preliminary budget, it's critical that nonprofit agencies as well as nonprofit providers or government, sorry, government agencies and nonprofit providers have enough staff to quickly provide access to housing and services. We strongly recommend the council exempt HPD, NICH, DHS, HRA, and DYC D runaway and homeless youth from the mayor's three percent across the board cuts to city agencies. Eliminating vacant positions doesn't mean that the positions weren't necessary. It just means that there will be less people left to do the work. Robust staffing is necessary to help tenants get their arrears paid, to access city and state FEPs rental vouchers, as well as the emergency housing vouchers, as well as applying for public assistance and other things like cash assistance and SNAP. HSHU is extremely grateful to the council for passing Intro one forty-six last session, which raised City FEPs rent levels. And DHS and HRA budgets need to be held harmless to be able to really maximize those gains, given that there's going to be increased demand for that voucher now. Council should also direct additional funding to NICH and HPD departments that are processing the emergency housing vouchers. Given that rollout for that has been very slow because of low staffing levels. And just two other things that, that we hope the council will consider in its budget request is supporting the Human Services Council Just Pay campaign to raise wages of the nonprofit workforce, given that there are staff vacancies in critical positions like housing specialists, which means slowing the rate at which people can move into permanent housing. And then we are concerned that the mayor did not include any additional funding for a, for affordable housing or for increased costs for rental assistance. We hope the committee will lead on those two issues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Eric. Super helpful. Appreciate your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
Audrey.
We'll now hear from Lyric Thompson.
Hi, good afternoon, council. Congratulations, Councilmember Sanchez. Congratulations on your appointment as chair. There is so much need here in the trenches. There is, I'm not with an organization. I'm just a regular citizen out here fighting to get my four twenty-one A building up to code. There's a lot of, there's so many people that need help right now, and we are losing affordable housing like a fart in the wind. Rent stabilized buildings are going like this. So I decided I would start this by giving you some money. We need money currently, and I find a lot of it in the hands of non-compliant four twenty-one A developers. To give you an example, I'll give you three buildings. Fifty-five twenty-seven Myrtle Avenue, Queens. This is fifty units that has not been registered with DHCR since two thousand eighteen, currently receiving four twenty-one A. We've lost eight hundred thousand seventy-eight dollars in tax income from that building. We have six thirty-five Fourth Avenue in Brooklyn, ninety-one units, hasn't been registered with DHCR since two thousand eighteen, currently receiving four twenty-one A exemptions. We've lost two, two million eighty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars in that building. And then we have eight thirty-six Bergen Street in Brooklyn, sixty-seven units, also have not been registered with DHCR since two thousand eighteen, currently receiving four twenty-one A exemptions, two million fifty thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. That is five million eleven thousand dollars in three buildings that could go towards rental aid and assistance for tenants towards the one-shot deals. And I have to ask myself, you know, this is just three. We're losing billions. If we decided to actually audit the four twenty-one A program and inquire with HPD as to why they're not requiring full repayment to non-compliant developers.
Time has expired.
We would have some money on the table. I know in our building, our building wasn't even completed. The entire four twenty-one A application was forged. And when HPD revoked the exemption, even though the developer received over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax abatements, we only have him pay back forty thousand. So the under, other hundred thousand is like, what, a gift for committing crimes? For not finishing the building, for forging documents? I can't help but think that that sends a very bad message. A message that we need not to send. It's not in our best interest. So.
All right. Great. Well, thank you so much, Lyric, and we will certainly be talking more about four twenty-one A as reform efforts are underway. So we, I look forward to hearing more from you, and if you will submit your testimony, it would be great to have those addresses you've listed on file and the quantities as well. Thank you so much.
Certainly. Thank you.
No problem. Great. Now I just want to call on Councilmember Kagan.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Sanchez, for amazing public hearings. Very important topic. I believe it's important for the entire city, for both tenants and landlords, and for the well-being of our New York City. Of course, pandemic affected everyone, and I strongly support the extension of the rent stabilization law. It's so important for so many families. I live myself in a building which is very unstable, and I see my neighbors, like, some of them applied for this E-RAP program, which is very, very important. So I'm, I'm definitely supporting this extension, and I would like to praise Chair Sanchez for this amazing hearings. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I have to leave due to other commitments, but this is so important. And this program is important. Rent stabilization extension is crucial for so many families, just to keep going, especially for families with financial hardship and middle-class income. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kagan. I believe that wraps our public testimony. Is that right, Audrey? Excellent. And so with that, we'll, we'll bring this hearing to a close. Thank you so much to all of my colleagues who were able to sit and listen and participate, and to all of the members of the public, the administration, for testifying today on this important issue. I look forward to your support on my bill, Intro seventy, to extend the deadline, to extend the Rent Stabilization Act for July first, two thousand twenty-two. And we will be having a vote on that shortly. That, that information will go out. So thank you so much, everyone. Really appreciate everybody's time.